Yeah, I do give more of that.
All right, we ready? Morning, everyone. It is eight thirty. Thank you all for being here. For this special call meeting of the Temple City Council, May thirteenth, twenty twenty five. It's currently eight thirty A M. Item number one is to consider adopting a resolution canvassing the returns of the May third, twenty twenty five general election. Ms. LaVella.
Bottom you have before you this morning is canvassing of the May third general election. If you'll recall, on January sixteenth, the council ordered an election for council member District One and council member District Four. I can certify in writing today that the city council, to the city council, that only one candidate filed the place on the District Four, and therefore can declare Mike Pilkington unopposed and elected to office, and you do have his certificate in your packet. The returns for the May third general election for District One confirm that four hundred and fifty-three registered voters cast legal and valid votes, and the results are as follows. District One Jessica Walker received three hundred and fifty-eight votes. As the official canvassing authority for the May third, two twenty twenty five general election for the city of Temple, I here certify that Jessica Walker is hereby declared elected as council member for District One and Mike Pilkington for council member District Four. That concludes my discussion, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Very good. Thank you. Counsel, any questions for Ms. LaVella? Anybody want to contest the results, or? Everybody's okay? Okay, just, just asking, just asking. All right, then counsel, if there is no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion on item number one.
Okay.
We have a motion by council member Grant. We have a second by council member Pilkington. Counsel, please cast your vote. Item number one passes four votes to zero. Congratulations. Glad you got her back. Way to go. Very good. Judge, would you like to administer the oath? Ladies first, or do you do it at the same time? Very good.
Is there a microphone, or should I just speak loudly?
Here you go.
Can I just stay here?
Yes, I think that would be just fine.
Oh, wait, hold it. Judge, I do have a mic right here. Is it on? Do we know? It says on. We'll see.
We'll see.
I think it's for the recording mostly.
Okay, well, just in case.
This is recording. There we go.
There you go.
Um, I, just a quick thing about both of these outstanding people. I have sworn them in before, and I never usually say a word, but I want to say two things. With Mr. Pilkington, what I want to say about Mike Pilkington is that over the years, I have really come to know him as a very fair and kind and just person. It's got a long history. We, we talk about it quite a bit, and I just want to highlight that. As to Ms. Walker, who I almost called Ms. Howell all the time. The first friend I made when I moved to Temple was Ms. Ms. Walker, okay? And she has a kindness to her that is, you know, we always say, oh, that person lights up a room, and, and there are people who light up a room. But with Jessica, she lights up everybody in the room, too. And that's always been true from childhood to today. So I just want to thank you all for your service. I know that service can be an un, a thankless job at times, but you bring your kindness, and you bring your fairness, and you bring your light, and thank you so much. So if I could, please stand and raise your right hand. Okay, and just repeat after me. We're going to take it slow, all right? But I know you probably recall it. I Jessica Walker do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of council member of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the city of Temple.
Of the city of Temple.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the laws of this state.
The laws of the state.
And of the United States, excuse me.
The laws of the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Thank you, Senator. Let me get it to you. Science will keep you going. Okay, this is much easier than trying to get the microphone to figure itself out. Okay. Please raise your right hand. I, Mike Pilkington.
I, Mike Pilkington.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office of council member.
The duties of the office of council member.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and the laws of the United States.
The Constitution and the laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Thank you for the honor.
I do have to excuse myself for.
Thank you, Judge.
And I just wanted to quickly say thank you to all the District One voters that participated in this process. We have over, I think, ten thousand registered voters in District One, and so few people actually came out and did their duty. And it truly means every vote does count, and we saw that most definitely at this election, but I'm very grateful for everyone that took time out of their day and came and participated in this process. And I'm also thankful, I, I forgot to tell my husband and my family, so they're not here, but I'll hear about that later, I'm sure. But my cousin Perry and Laura and Thomas are all here today, so I'm very grateful for the clouds.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'm very honored that, uh, the public, even though I didn't, after running an election, I have an opponent, I'm, I am honored that the public will allow me to do this again, and having no opposition was the best way to do it, for sure. That was nice. So thank you to, to our community for that. And I'm also very honored to get to sit up here with, with these council members, fellow council members, as well as the staff that have all become very important people to me and, and very good friends. And it's just really fun to be able to sit and discuss and make decisions for, for the future of our community with this group. And I really appreciate the opportunity again, so.
Very good. Thank you, Mike. Unless you set up here, let's know Perry, you have, unless you set up here, you don't really understand it completely. And so thank you both for being willing to do this again. I know it takes a lot of time, takes a lot of ener, energy, takes a lot of effort. And this is the team that I want to work with. So thank you all for being willing to throw your hat in the ring and do this three more years. We're, we're better for it. So thank you very much.
We miss our opportunity else for a raise.
But the beatings will continue until morale improves.
Name your percent. You can add any percent increase you want.
That's always in the budget. Very good. Then let's move on to a more somber time. Item three on the agenda is to consider adopting a resolution accepting the resignation of District Three council member Susan Long. We all love Susan. She's going to be missed. I have a couple of letters that, that she's penned that I'll read here in a minute. But let's go ahead and if there's no discussion on this item, then counsel, I will go ahead and entertain a motion on accepting the resignation of council member Susan Long.
I will sadly make the motion.
Sadly second.
Have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Walker. We have a second by council member Pilkington. Counsel, please cast your vote. The acceptance of Susan's resignation passes four votes to zero. Susan did drop by my office yesterday and brought a couple of letters that she asked me to, to read out loud in this session. So the first one I'll read is to the, is to the staff of the city of Temple. Says, as some of you may know, I am resigning the position of District Three as the District Three member of the Temple City Council. My life has changed irrevocably due to my husband's serious illness, repeat hospitalizations, and surgeries. This was compounded by the fracture I sustained to my left femur at the coincidental same time. We are both basically recovered, and you may see me out and about at times, but my husband will continue to need a great deal of help from time. I'm sorry, my husband will continue to need a great deal of help and time from me. I've been honored to work with you, and many of you have become friends. I will miss you, and I'll miss the effort on behalf of the city that we have undertaken together. If we had designed a computer program for a city manager, we would have designed Bren. So please continue to help her, the mayor and the city council, as Temple moves forward to a wonderful future, and best wishes to everyone. And then the, the letter to the council reads, it is with sadness that I'm notifying the mayor and the city council of my resignation, of my resignation from the seat of District Three of the Temple City Council. You have been generous beyond compare, and in the extended leave of absence that you have granted me due to the extreme health events concerning my husband's serious illness, hospitalizations, and surgeries, as well as my concurrent fractured femur. I am very, very grateful, but I know that I'm not going to be able, I'm sorry, I'll, I know that I will not be available for the time required for some of the council activities. You're an exceptional council, each and every one of you. It's been a wonderful experience working with you. Continue to think of the whole, as you always do, and the way in which the needs of each district integrate, affect, and are affected by the whole city. Thank you again for your kindness and generosity. Signed, Susan Long. So Susan had been on council since seventeen, and she's fun to be with. She was fiery. It was, she, it didn't take much to get her stirred up, but she, she always, she always cared mostly about the residents. And ultimately, that's what you want in a council member. We stand between the, the government and the citizens. And, and Susan, when, when, when she could, she always favored the, the residents of Temple, and I always appreciated that about her. So she will be missed. She said that she really wanted to attend today, but again, if you know Susan, she said, but I would look like a blubbering idiot up there. So she, she loved the job here, and we'll miss her.
Really, she had so much spunk. She was such a joy to work with, and she absolutely will be missed. It's so emotional. You know, we, we had Wendell step down, and that was so difficult, and when you see someone like Susan, who is such a huge part of our community, she, she really is someone who loved what she did and enjoyed every minute of it. And there, there is a hole here now that we need to fill, and that's not going to be easy to do when you are following someone like Susan.
I agree. She did say yesterday, she said, you know, I'm just a cog in the wheel, right? I'm just a cog in the wheel. And, and I get that. I mean, if you go to that back wall and look at all those pictures, right, of past council members, and if you go back more than probably five or six of those pictures, ten or fifteen years, we can't name them, right? And at some point, I assume that our picture will be back there, and in a few years, they're not going to be able to name us either. So we just, you know, you just do your good work while you can, where you can, and then move on. So Susan accepted that.
I, I got the opportunity to speak to Susan yesterday, too, and, and yeah, she told me the same thing. She wanted to be here, but she didn't want to be a blubbering idiot, and and I'm usually pretty stoic, but I'm trying to hold back being a blubbering idiot myself, because this is a sad day. I've really, really appreciated working with, with her. And the first call I got after I filed the first time I ran was from Susan. Early, they came out in the paper, and like seven o'clock the next morning, Susan called me and said, that's fantastic. I support you. And this was before, before she had got on council. And that always meant a lot to me. And I'm going to miss, she, she's actually, which all of y'all have, but Susan has probably more than any, has sat on this dais and said things that have made me actually changed my mind on votes, and I appreciate that very much when we can discuss things and, and she seemed to find little, little things that would make a difference in, in how I wanted to vote, and, and that's, that's just needed. I'm going to really miss that, and, and miss her being around all the time. She's thankfully still in our community and still a friend, but I'm going to miss meeting with her as often as we were. And, but I completely understand why she has to do here what she's, what she's doing, and well, I know there's some other good citizens out there that'll be able to, to help us move forward, but she will be greatly missed, and won't have anybody to have my little side arguments with it. What are y'all going to take up some slack there?
I just want to say that Susan has been a, a great mentor to me, as well as the rest of you. And it's been a pleasure working alongside you, Susan. I know maybe you're watching today. But thank you for your dedication to the city of Temple and to the work that we do up here. I had the pleasure of sitting next to her in workshops, so we had our little sidebars as well. But again, it's been a pleasure working with you, and I am sad to see you go. Thank you.
Any else?
Staff around to say something?
Please.
You know, one thing that I think our staff is really, our, our city is really lucky to have is the council that, that you all have been for us, and, and Susan has been such an integral part of that. But, you know, the ability to cast a, a vision for where you wanted the city to go and then resource us to do that and support the staff team in implementing the vision that, that you set has been phenomenal. And that's really somewhat unusual, honestly, and sadly, is that, that y'all have been a great team together. The five of you together, working not, not, not necessarily always agreeing on every specific topic or, or policy issue, but always working for the good of the whole community while closely representing your, your district's interest. One thing that, for me, for Susan, is she was always just, she, she is an amazing supporter of the community. As y'all know, she has served for a long time, not just on council, but before that, she served on the school board, and I think she, she, outside of an active school board member or, or Dr. Ott, I don't know that you could have a bigger cheerleader for the city of Temple and Temple ISD than, than we do in, in Susan. I was always really impressed with her care for the growth and development of the community. I think that, you know, it, as a representative of District Three, which is, is one of our, well, we're really, the entire community is fast growing, but certainly there, there are areas in, in District Three along ninety-three where we saw case after case zoning and, and planning wise, and I always appreciated how passionate she was about making sure that the decisions that she was making from a land use policy position were, as Mayor said, were respectful of, not this, not just the reality that, that we're a growing community and need, need to grow smartly, but she also took great care in making sure that existing residents' needs and concerns were heard and taken care of, and she was she was so passionate about it. Sometimes, you know, I think she, she almost got sick over it, you know, because she cared so much about it. And I, I can appreciate that personality. I think she and I shared a little bit of that, of that, and I just, I, I know that that who steps into her role has big shoes to fill, and I hope that, you know, as, as that person, he or she comes on, that, that they'll, they'll work with you all to, to continue to cast the, the vision for the community, and I hope that some of the things that we're right in the middle of, that Susan was particularly passionate about, we can continue and do in her, you know, in her honor and, and make her proud.
Thank you. Very well said. Anybody else? Very good?
And she had the best nickname for Tracy. Moneybags.
Yeah, she's fun. We'll miss her. Okay, so speaking of a sort of, you know, moving on, will the council, what time is it? I can't read that. Eight forty-eight? Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Please do. Thank you for reminding me.
All right. So there is a process when we have a vacancy on council, and according to your charter, if there's less than a year remaining in the term, it, then the council does have the authority to make that appointment. And then the governing standards rules that you have adopted sets forth the, forth the process. And it requires that we post the vacancy in a way that can reach the most people. And we give a minimum of two weeks for people to fill out applications and return them to the city secretary's office. And then at the end of that two-week period, the council will review all of the applications, select people that you would want to interview, have those interviews, and then make the appointment. And there are multiple paths that we've set forward. One, that's the quickest that we could possibly do it, and it's my understanding that that's the path that we intend to take, knowing that if things don't go the way we plan, we can always adjust it. We can take as long as we need, but we can't shorten it. And so the plan is, after this meeting, And so the plan is, after this meeting, there will be a, a press release that will be issued that will give interested candidates information on how to access the online applications. There will be a website that will go live with that information. We will begin accepting applications tomorrow. That's May fourteenth. The last day to return a fully completed, notarized application will be close of business, five P M., May twenty-eighth. The first part, the first week, the beginning of the first week of June is when we will hope to have interviews. We will have a special called workshop on May, I'm sorry, what was that date? Thursday, May twenty-ninth, for the council to review all the applications, so that they will be due at five P M. on Wednesday, May twenty-eighth. Council will review the applications on Thursday, May twenty-ninth. And then you will conduct interviews sometime in the early week of June, maybe June second, June third, June fourth. Then there will be an item on your regular agenda for Thursday, June fifth, to make an appointment if you are prepared to do so. If you're not prepared to do so, then we can delay that appointment into your next regular meeting, which would be June twenty-sixth or even into July third. So our, our goal and our plan is to meet all of those touchstones in order to make the appointment as quickly as possible. But again, at any time you're not ready to move forward to that next step, we can always push it into the future until you are ready to, to make that appointment.
Very good.
And I, I just, I'm trying to make sure I keep my kind of clear. Our only extra meeting for this is twenty-ninth, correct?
That will be the twenty-ninth, but then we will also have a special workshop for you to actually conduct the interviews. And that would be either June second or June third. I think you guys just need to tell us what dates work best for you, and then Jana can get that scheduled. So there will be two special meetings, now and the fifth.
Okay. No, appreciate that. Appreciate that rundown. That's very helpful to get everything set. So again, like, like you said, we're going to move as quickly as we can, but we're going, we're not going to move too quickly. Right? We want to be sure and find the right person that fits well with us, fits well with the city, understands, you know, how, how things operate and are willing to fold in with us. So I'm looking forward to it, to the process, and I know we'll, we will find a good qualified candidate to work with us. So very good. Special thanks to staff for the help. Jana, thank you for your hard work with the elections. I know you, you sort of kind of a love-hate relationship you have with elections. That's okay. You do a good job with it, and, and we appreciate that very much. So, okay, so with that, it is eight fifty-three. We will adjourn this public session, and council will move into executive session to begin finding Susan's replacement. So thank you all for attending.